Oh, that wouldn't even work either.
Okay, the May 26, 2015 study session in the Newport Beach City Council will come to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Okay, clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Muldoon. Councilmember Duffy. Councilmember Curry. Councilmember Piattar.
None.
And Councilmember Petros?
Yeah, I wanted to get a clarification on item number three. And I'm not the sharpest tool in the shed. I need to understand some of the new definitions and pardon me while I get my up here. The billing unit, the term billing unit now, what is that? And really more to the point, what is the purpose and definition of section C1C that speaks to 10 versus 20 billing units and as it relates to the relief?
We need George to answer those and he's not here yet, so.
I think he's at.
Hold on.
Okay.
Billing units, 748.
If you want to move on to...
Mayor Pro Tim Dixon, did you have any?
No, thank you.
Okay, and I had none. So, George?
Hi, good evening, George Murray. So I was outside waiting for our consultant for our item, they're not here yet. So you had a question about billing units?
Yeah, George, it, in the, under the definitions, we have a term billing unit, which means the unit of water used to apply rates for purposes of calculating water charges. And it equals just under, what's, 748 precisely gallons?
Yes.
Okay, what is that? What is that? And more, more to the point, under the relief section, C1C exemptions, there's a, or relief from compliance, C1C. For residential customers, whether the usage in the prior billing period was equivalent to or less than 10 billing units for customers billed on a monthly basis or 20 on a bimonthly basis. I don't understand what that means or what you're trying to achieve.
Okay, first of all, billing unit, on everyone's municipal services bill, a billing unit is 100 cubic foot, 100 cubic foot of water. So you'll see HCF as a term on your bill. That equals 748 gallons. So everybody is billed by a billing unit which is equal to 748 gallons. Some cities use CCF, I know it gets more confusing, but we use HCF. So the terms interchangeable. Well, we wanted to define what a billing unit was, which is the 748 gallons. So when you see the 10 HCF or billing units, that's what you see physically on your bill. Since we do bimonthly billing, which is what you're referencing, for bimonthly you'd see 20, which is two months in one billing period.
What are we trying to get at when we're considering the relief?
So in this one, this was something that we, you brought up last meeting and other members of the community have brought up is, hey, I've conserved everything I can. I live in a small home, I don't have a yard, I can't conserve 25%. There's nothing in our municipal code that allows us to even consider relief from compliance for low water users. So we did a calculation that said, for bare minimum, it's 50 gallons per person per day, that's the state average for four people in a normal home, equals eight billing units or eight HCFs. We set the number at 10. That's a little bit higher than the bare minimum, but yet less than our city's average, which is around 15 HCF or 15 billing units per month. So it's less than the average, more than what the bare minimum. But hey, if you're at 10 for one month, or you're at 20 for two months, there's nothing more you can do. So that's what we're trying to target.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll now move on to study session item number two, which is the budget, part two.
Bear with me for one second. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, this is a continuation of the study session we held on May 12th where the city manager and I provided a high-level overview of the 1516 proposed budget. As a reminder, the proposed budget is financially sound and we believe it appropriately emphasizes the goals and priorities of this city council. The proposed budget continues to emphasize those qualities that make Newport Beach exceptional. And today's agenda, we'll be covering three main topics. Brief overview of the facilities financial plan, otherwise known as FFP. We will follow up on several good questions that came up during the last study session. And then we'll conclude with a review of the latest updates to the budget checklist. And for those of you following at home, our budget presentations are listed at our URL forward slash financial info. Or the FFP specifically is listed at NewportBeach forward slash FFP. With that, with that, let's move into the FFP review. The FFP is a long-term plan to replace all of our community facilities on a perpetual basis. Now, these include parks, community centers, fire stations, libraries, and the police station. Now, this is a 30,000-foot view plan. It's not a specific building specked out plan. It just helps us analyze the expected sources and uses for the project, the complement of projects included in the plan. And as mentioned, it can be found on that, this specific URL. So what's been the latest? We've heard some council input during the previous study sessions where, on the CIP. And the main question for today is, are we heading in the right direction with the facilities plan? Do the projects represent the priorities of the city council and community? This direction is always subject to change. Cost estimates, no doubt, will change tomorrow and probably the next month. But, so at any time, council will have the opportunity to approve each project as it comes up or change direction and just give staff that direction as it comes up. On the evening agenda, you'll be asked to tell us if indeed we are on the right track with respect to the list of projects, the scope, and the timing. So in a nutshell, the priority projects through 2025 are those listed on this page. I can bring up the FFP itself if you'd like to see all of the projects. Does council at this time want to comment on the projects and the timing of anything listed so far? Would council like to see the full complement of projects? Okay, so moving forward, the facilities plans, the near-term funding sources are from three main components. The blue bar is represented by general fund contributions. The green bar are represented by private contributions. And for most part, those are negotiated through development agreements. The small purple bar, at least in the near term, is interest earnings and will play a more significant role later on. Of course, you see the private contributions in the near term are significant and they were what made us, made it available for us to jumpstart the program. But looking forward, this plan isn't fully reliant on developer contributions. So when you look forward, the next 30 years, 80% of all funding is coming from general fund contributions. And developer contributions make up 13%. And investment earnings start, start playing a larger role. So some key metrics that I like to look at, that you can see the general fund contribution, the minimum over a 30-year period is $8 million. The maximum is 20.6 and the average $14 million a year. You can see our debt service coverage at the maximum, looking forward. This is our debt service in relationship to our revenues. The maximum, it would represent 4.6% of our general fund revenues and the average is only 2.6 of general fund revenues. And we like to have the general fund reserve balance be greater than our maximum annual debt service. And over that 30-year period, you can see that our minimum FFP reserve is $11.6 million projected forward. So clearly, it is a sound plan. And when you look at the fund balance itself, this is where I like to say the proof is in the pudding here. You can see that the FFP reserve balance over a 30-year period. And the green bars is our minimum FFP balance. And you can see that the near term and probably our toughest hurdle will be out in about 2027. Shortly thereafter, you can see the FFP balance will be accumulating reserves quite rapidly for the next phase of replenishing our buildings on a cash basis. And so it's conceivably, we'll never have to issue debt again for facilities, at least how they are currently contemplated. So if there are no further questions on the facilities financial plan, I'm going to move up to the follow-up questions from, that have come up. I've heard many. I'll hit each one of these. I won't bore you to read through each single one right now.
Dan? I'm sorry, I do want to go back to FFP really quickly, one thing. That we have a minimum balance in the FFP. Now, go back to that, yeah, the green line. And that is by virtue of council policy. But maintaining that balance does not, in fact, fund the desired infrastructure and capital projects in the city, correct?
Well, it's showing that inclusive of all of our expenditures, we never dip below that minimum target.
But if we kept only the minimum target, we could not achieve what we wanted to in terms of the building and capital projects. So there's no, that minimum is just a buffer, if you will. But we can't see our vision by just maintaining that minimum. We need these contributions over time in excess of the minimum to do things like see walls, police stations, all the other things.
Correct, this plan requires a general fund contribution of approximately $14 million a year, which never exceeds 5% of our general fund revenues. So that's another measure to say, we're not buying more house than we can afford. So getting to the follow-up questions, you know, can I hear more about the M&amp;O expenditures? And rightfully so. We looked at this pie chart in our last presentation. And Mayor Pro Tim Dixon pointed at, well, you know, the salary benefits and the capital projects we've heard quite a bit about. But we haven't really heard a lot about our maintenance and operations. So I'm going to go into quite a bit of detail. I've got a lot of slides on it for your reference, but I'm not going to go through each one of them in graphic detail. So on to the, to the M&amp;O. So of our M&amp;O represents the 53.4 million. And that's broken up, 48% of that is from contracts. 24% of our M&amp;O is our internal service fund charges. Those are charges, those are centrally managed functions that we charge our departments so that we can charge, give them a level charge each year and set aside for those expenditures that may occur on an infrequent basis or it's something that we need to save for over a long period of time. About 9% of it is in maintenance, 4%, 9, sorry, 8% in, or 9% in supplies and 7 to 8% in maintenance. Okay, so we'll, we'll now look at some of those individual components. Contractual services representing the largest component. And of that, of contractual components, that 24.4 million, you can see the largest component is what turns out to be a bit of a catch-all. This is our professional technical services component. And we'll, we'll speak about that on the next slide. But you can see, we have, we have already outsourced a number of services, the largest being residential refuse. Contract recreation instruction is made up by many vendors. We've got medium contract services, park facilities, our parking contract, janitorial services, helicopter services, and so on. So let's take a look, a closer look at the professional services category. In that too, we've got some large contracts in there. Tree trimming probably should have been pulled out of professional services and called out on its own. And the same thing probably with contract building maintenance. But then you get into, the police has crossing guards, shelter services, they're charged for 800 megahertz. We have provisions for management consulting, bid administration, public broadcasts, and so on and so on. I'll leave this for your review, but again, not get into every single contract that we have out there. Our internal service charges, this is the 12 million that is charged to the M&amp;O. Component of our budget doesn't include things that are charged to salary benefits like workers' compensation and retiree insurance. But it does include things like the general insurance, your IT charge, your vehicle replacement charge, your IT equipment replacement charge. We even set aside money for eventual replacement of parking equipment, recreation, senior services, equipment, and resurfacing of tennis courts, et cetera. So our, our M&amp;O does contain a fairly large number that is set aside for future expenditures. And then we can get into some, some more granular detail of what's included in maintenance and what do we consider supplies. And here again is some of the gory detail. Drilling down further, you can see what we spend across all departments in what we incur in electricity. This is water that we, this is the amount that the city consumes in water and charges itself through interdepartmental charges. Data lines, telephone, natural gas. The capital outlay, I'll say here, is all small dollar stuff, not stuff that I would consider capital from a large city standpoint, but items that are contained within the department's budget. Of course, there are other agency fees, publications and dues. There's kind of miscellaneous category. And then kind of rounding out, your M&amp;O summary is contained in the bottom right-hand corner. So you can see that, again, the largest component is contractual services, internal services, supplies, and so on. So hopefully, that provides you a little better feel of what's contained in our, our M&amp;O component of our budget. Another question was asked, can we see expenditures by program? And well, yes, we can. So I've listed at least how the programs exist today. Our largest by far, you wouldn't, no surprise, are fire operations, police patrol, and police services. But by the time you get down to the bottom of the page, the programs represent less than 1% of general fund expenditures. And so these go on for another page and a half of more granular programs. And you can see that summary of programs on page 20 through 21 of the budget detail. And again, I've referenced the page number and the detail so that if, if in fact, you want to see what's going on with water quality, what are they spending their money on? You can get into the graphic object-by-object code in the detailed component of the budget. I mentioned before that capital, if anybody's keeping tabs, you may have noticed I said M&amp;O was 53.4 million. And I consider that the sum of both the M&amp;O and the small capital items that are purchased within the departments. Again, that budget detail can be provided. The budget page is forward slash budget, same URL, and you can view it at page 20 through 21. One of the residents asked, well, you know, we spend a lot of time on our top three revenues, but we don't really talk about all other sources. And there might be indeed some, some public policy decisions in there. That is, that is true, you know, where can I see those? Those are on pages one through seven of our budget detail, same URL. And it would break down these components, charges for services. Use of money and property is where I could see, I think they also asked, where can I see the parking revenue? And that would be contained within use of money and property. That's also where we could see our rental income, et cetera. But they're the first seven pages of the budget detail. If you wanted to see other funds, others outside the general fund, those are on pages seven through 17 of the budget. And they go from the Water Enterprise to Tidlens, Insurance Reserve, et cetera. There was another question I've heard asked a lot is, where can I see a count by department by year? In fact, that is available in the Performance Plan of the Budget, page 184. You can see department by department, at least a three-year look at what their employee account is. And for general government, we see that for the last three years, it went from 60, 61 to 60 to 59 employees that make up the general government component. But, but all, all functions and departments are represented on that page of the budget. This came up from Finance Committee. They said, okay, well, it's great, you know, we've, have a lot, we're carrying a lot in capital projects. What has the actual spend been by year? And you can see from 2010, it does vary quite a bit depending on what's going on. And if you look at the 2015 number, that's what I would say. That's what we're carrying in authorized capital projects. And if you look in 16, that's what will be newly authorized in 1516. So a large portion of the 15 numbers will roll forward, will be added to the 20. I'm guesstimating, we'll end up with about $100 million of carrying projects in 1516. That is, again, available in the Performance Plan of the Budget. A resident asked, you know, do we consider new development when we develop our revenue assumptions? And the quick answer is yes. To varying degrees, we will look at developer contributions, you know, specific to the development. We might look at it from, from the standpoint of what the direct developer contributions, the fees that we receive. Of course, 98% of the public benefit fees go to benefit the facilities financial plan. And 2% of those fees go, are deposited into the Cultural and Arts Facility Fund. We also receive some, some park and loofah fees. We also assess the impact of, you know, for, for large buildings that have gone up, we want to make sure they make it to our property tax roll timely. And in fact, we do see the Two Towers coming online. We do consider the impact on sales taxes. The Uptown Newport project has a prominent tenant in there, Jazz Semi Conductors. That produces a good amount of sales talks for the city. And, and we're, we are keeping tabs of when, you know, if, in fact, they renewed their lease, when, you know, are they going to pull the plug and move? But we do consider the impact of new development. Another individual asked, do we have a formal internal audit program? And I wouldn't say we have a formal internal audit program, but we do have money typically set aside on an as-needed basis, whether it's management consulting, are we organized in the best possible manner? We have money aside to perform performance audits and agreed-upon procedures on an as-needed basis. We would usually typically hire out for that. We have our annual audits that, that by oversight agencies that come in, we are, our annual financial statement audit, we have a single audit prepared. We also have CPAs and at least one certified internal auditor on staff that can pitch in. Many of us have, have a deep audit background. Moving on, one of our residents asked, you know, I'd like to really see more granularity in what's available on the, on the budget. Can I see employee travel? Can I see employee travel to Poughkeepsie? And the truth is, today, you can't, but by the end of the year, we do plan on bringing up what, a citizens transparency portal. I am certain that will be up and running before the end of this next fiscal year, so members of the public can drill down and look at expenditures to a more granular level of detail. I think it's a policy question, how far do we want to let folks go? Do we want to actually see where our employees are traveling, et cetera? But we will have a portal coming soon for citizens transparency. So that was about the end of the questions that at least I took notes on. There are several important budget links that can either take you to the budget or directly to our audited financials, our pension actuarial vows are on our website, the FFP is on our website. And if you can't remember all of those, just remember this one, the Financial Info one, this is our URL, forward slash Financial Info, will really kind of take you to a number of important financial documents, including our budget presentations. And if, of course, you are still stumped, you're always welcome to call me directly. If I can't answer it directly, I've got a number of sharp budget staff that can bail me out if I can't answer your question. So moving on to the checklist.
Okay, let's take the Marina Park thing first. Or do you have something to go over? I see your slide, do you want to go over something before we get into the checklist?
You mean the Mariners Mile one?
Yeah, excuse me, Mariners Mile. Or do you want to go over something before that?
Aaron's saying you could do that tonight, not, you could just, we could go through Q and A on the checklist right now.
So he doesn't have to recuse himself now? Is that?
Well, it's probably best, if you want to just recuse yourself on the Mariners Mile item, if anyone has questions on it.
Yeah, why don't we do that, then we can get back into the meat of things, so, would you like to accuse yourself on Mariners Mile?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we'll bring you back real quick. Okay, so I guess the question that would be posed, does anyone, we've discussed Mariners Mile at previous study sessions, does anyone want to have any additional discussion or remove it from the checklist?
Studies?
Mariners Mile studies, correct. That's on the second page there. Okay, seeing no one, is that sufficient, Mr. City Attorney? Okay, welcome back, Councilmember Duffy.
Back from the cone of silence.
Okay, okay, Dan, go ahead now.
So this hasn't changed since the last time we reviewed it. We did have some, about $2 million of surplus at the end of last year. I made a recommendation that perhaps we take a balanced approach, and half of it roughly go to perhaps a neighborhood enhancement fund, or some other project that benefited the community today, as well as something that may benefit more of a, take a long-term approach towards stewardship. So that hasn't changed. Anything in blue, are those things that may have popped up since the last we spoke, or what, even what's in your material today? I'll come back to this UTOT residential tax, but as a result of added enforcement, we may be able to increase our UTOT residential tax. If you are agreeable, we're to adding a three-month seasonal employee to enforce short-term lodging permits. We see obviously 75% of all short-term lodging occurs during the summer months. We understand from members of the community that not everyone is complying. We can make a, with a seasonal employee, under 20,000 a year, we think we can probably increase compliance and increase revenues by 40,000. And it would be cumulative, if we did this again next year, if we had 24 members participate in the first year, and we followed up on the second year, that we, this would be a cumulative impact, so the second year, you might actually have $80,000 of more TOT tax. So that's the only thing that's changed on this one. Dave, did you?
Can I ask for some feedback on that, if anyone feels like they need more information? We've been working closely with a couple of you about this issue, that we're finding more and more people renting out, many times appropriately, but they don't have a short-term lodging permit, I mean, an appropriate residential zone. So as Dan's saying, what we're talking about is some additional resources to get those people under permit, and if they're in R1, they're not allowed to do it. So it'd be an enforcement in R1, if they don't have a lodging permit already. So he's got the revenue and the expense associated with that.
So is this to deal with the Airbnb?
It's a little bit to deal with Airbnb and VRBO, and we're not really doing this in a vacuum. We've had conversations with folks in the legal rental business who say that this is happening out, this is unleveling the playing field, the fact that it's happening without permits, because many times these folks are not paying the TOT that the others are paying.
Councilmember Pieter.
So we're not talking about the guy that rents out his third bedroom to a college student?
That's correct, that's not a short-term lodging. This would be 30 days or less.
So if someone wanted to rent out a room in a VRBO or Airbnb situation, even if it's 30 days or less, are these guys going to be coming out, attack, they're not leasing out the whole place, they're just bringing in 12 roommates a year rather than one? And they are living there.
There could be a potential violation of the zoning code, depending on how they did it, the boarding house restrictions.
Yeah, you can operate a boarding house in Newport Beach, but you could operate a vacation rental if you have a permit, that is usually week to week. But if you're rotating someone in and out, and they're not living as a single housekeeping unit, that arguably is a boarding house, and that's long been prohibited.
Yeah, I mean, most of the time when I hear people doing that, it's a single housekeeping unit, they share the kitchen and the living space, and...
And they all agree to live there cooperatively versus one person is in charge of who comes in and out?
Usually one person's in charge, the owner or the main tenant, and then they'll lease out the other bedroom on a short-term basis.
Aaron's trying to say.
I think each situation's very factually intense, we have to take a look at each one to see whether it's aligned with what the code allows or doesn't allow.
But this is not, up here on the budget checklist, is not structured towards that kind of use. That's either allowed by the code or not. This is Airbnb or VRBO. There's one more that I'm forgetting the name of, but you guys probably know, HomeAway.
Yeah, so why is it that our existing code enforcement's not adequate?
This actually is not done by code enforcement, we have them busily working on lots of things, this is done by our revenue division, and it's under her, Monique Navarette's responsibility to make sure everyone that has a short-term lodging has a permit, so we...
And how are these people flagged? Are they flagged by complaints by neighbors, complaints by our?
Sometimes by neighbors, sometimes we'll look on our own, we'll look under VRBO and Airbnb, and with two reasons, one, to make sure they're complying with the zoning, because those are not, new ones are not allowed in R1, other times to make sure that the level, the playing field is level.
Thank you.
Okay.
On to the next page.
Let me jump in, Dan, again. So every year, outside of the process a little bit, and that's not good or bad, it's just, there isn't really a process where those top two things fit in. But I know it's been a discussion with council in years past, how much to give to the Balboa Museum and Historical Society, they asked for 25. I was proposing that they get what they got last year, which was 20. Last year, for the first time in a little while, we gave the sister cities about 30, sorry, 3,000 to cover their insurance costs. And then as Dan has pointed out, there, under community development, there's just a revenue decrease, sorry, expense decrease there associated with CDD contracts. But I wanted to make sure I highlighted those first two, at least.
Okay, any questions on this?
Oh, let me jump to one more, so this is not blue, but it's, I want to be transparent about it, the beach security and firing management. I think we had all hoped that the eventual plan that came through would not require any of this. I think it will not require any enforcement after a year or two, because I think we will fit into our own groove and make that work, but the folks from AQMD have insisted that we have, and so have the residents, insisted that we have a delineation between charcoal users and wood users in a friendly way. We're already budgeting about 60,000 for this, so this is in addition to the 60, this is about 170. We do have a security firm out there that I think the police department's been happy with the last two months, they're friendly, they wear, you know, shorts and a polo shirt versus a uniform. And again, it's my hope, ever the optimist, that we will be able to reduce this and possibly eliminate it after a year or two, when we get people understanding what we're doing here. And this relates to a new firing plan that a number of you have seen, that involves some wood and some charcoal.
That's so-called Plan 17?
So-called Plan 17, yes. Goes before the Coastal Commission in a week or so, two weeks.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Pieter.
Mr. Mayor, I guess the other question would be, this would include curfew, right? So at 10 o'clock when the beach shuts down, these same people would be enforcing that aspect of it as well?
Yeah, if people really get out of line, the police, they'll call the police department, that's kind of their strategy.
Nobody gets out of line, you put in all the problems.
Never, no. It's peaceful, educational enforcement, and then call the police if it gets bad.
Dave, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the library and cultural arts, just a reminder, that comes from the TOT, or what did we decide to allocate that from?
Yeah, that's another good one to highlight. So we brought the Arts and Culture Master Plan to you a while back, and a number of folks were taking notes to try to see, you know, do we do an in-house or contract? And I think there was certainly some disagreement on the council's part. So we're proposing what is in effect, I think, a .75 contract position, and it is in effect funded, sorry, we're moving all around there. I'm so confused. Is it on that page? Next page. So for $60,000, and yes, you know, that is in effect offset by the contribution of 150, if that's how we choose to budget it. We can pay for this, though, within the current general fund, if you're amenable to it.
For a large part, the folks in Public Works have to make their best guess early on, we try to force them into making decisions about projects that will either be carried forward or not, and they're good enough to make their best estimates, and, but then, as we approach the final budget adoption, they may have a few recommendations to come up, and that's why you see more than usual.
So let's talk about at least the first two. The Coral Mar Enchway project, then, if you adopt the checklist, is funded at $400,000 per your request. And the second one is what, when we're looking at what we need to do in terms of medians, and replace the grass with drought-tolerant landscaping versus just rip it out and leave the dirt, we think half a million dollars gets us a little bit down the road, certainly not all the way. We're anxious to get this going, because as you've been seeing in the paper, the credits, the $2 square foot turf credit is back, they just, I just saw this afternoon, they funded it with another, I think, 350 or 450 million, but we really got to get in there and get our application in for those. So that money will go immediately towards those efforts.
Dave, I have a question on the medians. It struck me the other day when I was driving down Bayside Drive and looking up El Paso, there's that little grass median that Irvine Terrace HOA put in, and it wasn't on any of the diagrams that I recall looking at. How are we going to treat that one?
George or Dave, do you remember that one? Getting below my, above my knowledge here.
We are putting all those on a list, the big ones we've got categorized, we are finding little ones, our municipal operation folks are taking some of those little ones right now, we're changing them out, the bigger ones, we need a bigger plan for, but we'll make sure we note that one.
So Dave, do you think we're just uncertain whether or not that's ours or the HOAs, and we'll just look at it?
It might have been that, or it might have just been an oversight, we found a couple other little ones along there, there's a lot of medians, a lot of landscape area out in the city.
Yeah, I think on that one, you ought to be sure and talk to the Irvine Terrace Homeowners Association, because I know they paid for all the trees and all the lighting and everything that's in there, so they spent a lot of money there.
We certainly will, the, it's a strict rule that unless it's irrigated by reclaimed water, you can't irrigate turf, whether you're a private HOA or otherwise, so, but we will talk with them about that.
I'd just hate for him to walk out one day and see dead grass.
Us, too.
And call me on the phone.
We're actually in the process of sending out letters, we found a lot of medians out there that are city medians that HOAs do maintain, just like this one, and we're sending them a notice to let them know how to address it and work with us on that one, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on. So the rest of these are really, Public Works kind of a routine kind of correction for projects that they weren't sure where they were going to get to this year or last year, so if you see negatives, it means, okay, we are going to get to spending some of this money in the current fiscal year, meaning 14, 15. If it's an addition, means, yeah, they previously hoped to get to it, but it looks like we're not going to be able to encumber or get the expenditure done until the next year. So this is just a change to the rebudgeted CIPs.
Dan, I'm not sure I understood you did that the right way. So if they're in parentheses, they're coming out, if they're not in parentheses, they're staying in? Is that right?
If they're in parentheses, they are being removed from the rebudget list because they are expending them in fiscal year 14, 15.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'm glad we caught that $50 for the old Newport Boulevard thing, you don't want to lose $50.
I was worried about that one.
I think it was associated with a grant, so we wanted to be accurate. Okay, so this is a sum by fund of what you saw on the previous page, of that net impact, but again, it's just really moving money from one year to the next. And when we look at the personnel changes that we've included, all-inclusive, up to today, positions that we know of, we are up two positions, but we know that by the end of the fiscal year, there'll be probably three grounds workers coming off the books related to the refuse recycling, outsourcing, and we'll be actually down one position by the, at least one position by the end of the year.
So let me chime in, too, with Dan, this is always an important page for the council and the public to consider, because as many of them in the council know, we've continued to kind of step down a bit each year with positions, and this is one year where you'll go up two, but then down three by the end of the year, so net is a decrease in one, if you approve the budget. And so you could see that the police officers, the three police officers and one sergeant are part of the count, and there are four people for Marina Park. I wanted to make sure folks knew that. The new project at Marina Park, we think it'll take four people to staff that, oversee all the contractors. I know there was a statement out there that we might be hiring eight people for that, it's four people. So net change overall is two, as of July 1, 15, but as of June 30, 16, will be down one.
Does that four include the Harbor Resources personnel we're moving over there, or not?
No, that's just a move, just a transfer of bodies.
That might be where some of the confusion came from, too.
Oh, I see, okay.
So the surplus summary, I believe we reported a number close to 229, I think it was 228,700 as our surplus, these are the net effect of the changes that we're proposing on the checklist, which would reduce the surplus down to roughly about 171,000. reduce the surplus down to roughly about 171,000.
And then, Dan, as you've noted, the checklist implements the surplus from the current year, the year that we're in, by sending half of it to neighborhood enhancement and half of it to other post-employment benefits. So I want to make sure you're aware that if you adopt the checklist, you make those appropriations as well as these. And is that it for the checklist, almost? So I know it's helpful to the mayor and it's definitely helpful to staff, helpful to staff. If you see things on here that you feel like you want to vote on separately because you want to vote no on it, that's a good thing to do to let the mayor and the staff know now. You could also do it tonight.
Also, now, if we want to get into any detailed discussion on these items, this would be the time to do it. Any questions, discussion this time? Councilmember Pieter?
I'll take a first crack at it. Could I hear from Mr. Webb as far as what we have in the budget on seawalls?
Let me take a quick look for you here. There's not a lot. I believe the biggest one is the design for the possible Babo Island seawalls, but the construction, I know, is not in there.
So you have the $99,000 for design?
We have about $99,000. That's actually miscellaneous seawalls. If you go up to the very top of that page, third item down, you'll see Babo Island seawalls.
You have it on which page now?
I'm on page, funny, my.
37.
Yeah, mine doesn't have page numbers, unfortunately. It's under your harbor beaches and parks. It's your summary.
It's 37 of the CIP.
If you're looking at the detail, it's page 258.
So you'll see $650,000 there. That's what we planned on once we decide what we want to do with the walls. We'll have to kick off the design and the permitting through Coastal on that and the special studies.
And just for the public certification and the councils, that you're having an all-seawall study session on the second meeting in June.
That's correct.
First meeting in June is moorings, the second meeting in June is seawalls. Well, you'll get to better frame what you think this, the work should be.
Did that answer your question?
Do you want to go over that again? You got $650,000 for Babo seawalls this year?
Correct. It's in the budget this year. It's actually being carried over. It's a rebudget because we didn't get to starting at this current year. And there's also another $99,000 and that's left over from a previous job where we're using that to patch walls. We did Newport Island this year, sprawl and some sealants where we have leaks.
So it includes some miscellaneous repair?
Yes.
But not, and designed, but no major repairs or replacements?
There's no major repairs other than what we have planned for Babo Island this year.
And do we have in the FFP a plan as far as the seawall replacement, whether it's repaired for 20 years and replaced in 20 or replacing everything in 10? What are we doing?
I believe the FFP doesn't have seawalls because that's mainly general fund, typically seawalls, and this you'll find is out of tidelands. We've been repairing like street ends and things like that as we go by out of tidelands funds. So they are not in the FFP.
It's shown in the tidelands capital plan.
Correct.
So Dave, as Ed's noting, there is a similar master plan like the FFP, just for tidelands, called the tidelands capital plan. And it does call out a seawall expense. We're hoping for, at your second meeting in June, you'll be able to refine what that expense is, whether that's a shorter term improvement or the big once in an 80-year lifetime big improvement.
What do we have in the facilities plan now or the?
So the tidelands capital plan? I think there's just a range of dollars because we need to set that range with you.
And there's no funding for any of it?
No, the funding actually is proposed from the Thailand sources. It's over years, just like the facilities financing plan. It involves money coming in and money going out. And we should bring the tidelands capital plan to you all at that same meeting.
So that's not part of what we're approving today as far as the budget? If we approve it today?
No, you're looking at just the budget for this one year. We're also asking you to give us a reality check for the FFP. Do you recall, Dave, when we last brought the tidelands capital plan forward?
It was last year, and we probably mentioned it during the budget process. Again, as Merrick said, the tidelands capital plan is a plan that we look at, and the projects for this year are in the budget. But it's a five-year plan. So the construction of the Babo Island seawalls is, I believe, in next year's plan. It's just a placeholder. It's not in this current year's budget, the construction. And I can get you a copy of that plan. I actually have it here if you'd like to see it between the break.
Well, I was going to do two things. And one, I'd like to move it up earlier, assuming that we end up deciding on a maintenance project rather than a replacement project. The permitting should allow us to do it sooner rather than later. And I was going to offer, as far as funding on that, to delay the CDM library fire station expansion or remodel because a lot of the people in CDM are interested in participating in a longer-term process and trying to raise money to make a bigger library or something along those lines. So they'd like more time for input, anyway. So anyway, that's one idea I wanted to throw out. And I guess my next question is, police, if Mr. Johnson's available. Thank you, Dave. That's okay with the mayor?
Sure. Yes, sir.
And I understand that the three officers and the sergeant basically brings this out to, am I correct in saying it, one full-time equivalent, 24/7, that we can deploy on the peninsula? But it takes that kind of personnel to really staff the peninsula with additional person? Is that?
Actually, no, it's less than that. When you calculate a full-time equivalent, when you talk about one body, a police officer for 24/7 over the week, how do you calculate it? When you take into account training, vacation, those kinds of things, it's about between five to seven bodies you need to staff that one position.
Okay.
Plus supervision.
So in effect, we're staffing it for six or seven tenths of a body down there in the peninsula with the four extra?
Something like that, yes.
Employees that you're proposing?
Yes.
Understanding that, you know, when the bars get out, we could, like you say, we could probably put 50 officers down there because there's that many violations. But outside of the time when the bar shut down, you know, I'll exaggerate the time from 10:00 PM to, you know, 3:00 AM Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, what would you anticipate this extra staff doing?
Thank you. That's a great question. I don't want to sound like this is only for a bar issue. There's a lot of issues down the peninsula that we need to address, a lot of what we call quality of life issues, everything from the boardwalk safety to the beaches, homeless issues, you name it. We have a lot of issues down there that the community has been upset about and has asked us for more staffing down there to help them address those things. So there are a number of things. And depending on what's happening, what time of year, the seasons bringing different issues for us, holidays bringing different issues for us. So this allows us some flexibility having this team of officers down there to address the various issues that take place down there. So it's not just for bar closing time. Well, that's certainly, I think, what started this conversation and a big part of it. But that's not the only issue that we have down there. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it's very vague, but yes, you're telling me that there are other issues out there. You know, skateboarders on the boardwalk isn't something I want to hire, you know, more police for. Can they also participate and enforce those kinds of things? Well, that makes sense. It's how you deploy your forces. I guess the next question would be is, you know, if one of the primary things that we're looking at is the bar issue and mostly bar closing on weekends, you know, what would happen if we, instead of 800,000, authorized you with 200,000? And I don't know whether that means you would hire people overtime or hire one staff guy. What kind of an impact do we get? And I know I'm saying that in light of, you know, the bar owners have come to us and said, okay, yeah, we agree there's a problem. And they have banded together and want to work with the police force. And it sounds like they're doing a good job of that. And so they really haven't had a chance to kind of pitch in and help out yet. And I'm concerned that we're throwing an $800 cost into a forever budget for a problem that may go away because of cooperation of the bar owners. Obviously, I don't think they're going to solve all the problems, but it sounds like they're very cooperative. So I guess the question is, what can you do with 200? What would you do off the top of your head with 200?
A fourth of what I can do with 800?
Exactly.
Let me give you a little history. Maybe that'll help. You know, back during the recession, we actually took away from the peninsula itself, eight officers that were on bikes, eight bike officers. So those have been eliminated. Nothing has replaced those. So we're not even, we're not even asking, although actually, I would love to ask for it, but we're only asking for half of that back, four, three officers and a supervisor. The issues that were there before are there now. So what happens when we do that staffing down there? We have to, basically triage. We have to focus on what's important, the crime issues. And the quality of life issues sometimes don't get as big a focus. So we want to focus more on the quality of, or the community wants us to focus on those quality of life issues. A lot of things have happened also since we made that reduction. As you know, some of the legislation, the state has pushed a lot of problems down to the local levels, from the AB 109s to the three-strikes issues to now most of our, what used to be felonies are now misdemeanors. So we have this cycle, and I spoke to you last week, we have a 45% increase, 45% increase in arrests so far this year. That's going to be about 1,000 to 1,500 more arrests this year. So our workload is increasing.
That's citywide.
That's citywide.
But it takes personnel off the streets when they're performing their arrests.
Right, yes. And I will tell you that, the, well.
And you said that 45%, a lot of it's due to the things like the catch and release program that in effect the state's mandated. And these are the same criminals coming out after you've arrested them one time and coming out and repeating.
So we have the crime problem. In the peninsula specifically, we've had a 26, almost 27% increase in violent crime alone down the peninsula. So the crime issue is one issue that I'm concerned about, and that alone would justify more police officers in my mind. But then in addition to that, it's those quality of life issues that we discussed, the things that don't show up on the crime stats, the drunk drivers, the drunken public, the urinating in your front lawn, someone banging on your front door and trying to break into their house because they're too intoxicated to know where they live, the boardwalk issues, the beach issues, the traffic control issues down there that, as you know, are, could be a big problem on certain days in particular. Those are all the issues that obviously more enforcement, more officers would help enforce with.
Well, sure. I mean, I go to the police chief and say, would you like more officers? And he's going to say, no, I've got enough. But when you say 26% violent crime increase, then tell me what that means.
Rapes and aggravated assaults. Area 1 leads the city. Area 1 is the peninsula, leads the city in rapes and aggravated assaults. That's what's driving the violent crime in Area 1. That's directly related to alcohol establishments.
So basically bar fights?
Yes, well, and rapes.
Okay, have we increased in the reported rapes?
Yes.
And I haven't seen these numbers, so.
I showed the numbers that they, I think it was the meeting when this first came up with the, as well as at the town hall meeting.
March 10th.
Yeah. So I have the numbers. I'll certainly share those with you. Any numbers you want, we have them. We can pull those for you. Just ask and I'll get them to you, but.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Councilmember Petros.
Yeah, I just, thank you, chief. On the seawall issue, correct me if I'm wrong, it's my recollection that the tidelands management committee in a recent meeting went ahead and authorized this level of activity as being prudent, knowing that there is a years of design, permitting, and the like, to get to the point of construction. And that by virtue of doing this, we are in fact letting the floodgates go, no pun intended, to tee up the actual construction. We can't get to the construction until we actually do this phase. And I think we got a standing ovation at the tidelands management committee meeting when we in fact released these funds to do that. We can't, we can't dance any faster.
Well, just to, may I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to support Councilman Petros, at that same meeting, you're referring to, when we said we would advance it to a study session, there was a round of applause. They've been kind of chewing on this for quite a bit of time, and there is a sense of momentum now in moving it forward. And the funds are in the tideland, or is, Dave? Funds are in the tidelands capital fund and ready to be dispensed at whatever level when it's determined what that repair and maintenance plan is. Correct?
And Dave, isn't it also correct that the tidelands management committee actually gave you direction on kind of a strategy to move forward with the council in that study session? And that was to do spot improvements? I remember there being a very, very specific notion of, please go out, start the process, get the design and the engineering underway so that you can, in a subsequent year, build the seawalls where they are crumbling or low primarily on the west and?
And canal.
And Grand Canal, west side and Grand Canal.
I think you're summing up one of the options. I don't think we got specific direction to move on that. We do have that option. We were told to come to study session and verify that and have a larger discussion with council to, I believe, get that direction. And it's in the budget to do that. So once we come here and you guys give us where you want to go on it, we're ready to start.
There was a big description and discussion to mature this, to get to this point. And it was that body's notion that this was more than enough to get done in one budget year and nothing more could in fact happen without doing this first.
Correct.
Councilmember Duffy.
This is one that I was going to talk about, but now that you're talking about this, it's my opinion that we have a safety issue, more so than just a capital improvement issue. And I'm wondering if there's a method to chime in on that safety portion of it because if a seawall fails in the next eight months, five months, as a result of a king tide, and we all knew that we were in this precarious position, we chose to go to design and engineering for a year, I think that might be something we don't want to face. And I'm wondering, is there an opportunity to use the safety issue to speed up the process of permitting for a repair to the seawall, not replacing it? Is that, does that have any merit at all?
There may be some. We'd have to look at the attorneys with that, but there are cases, I know Seal Beach uses that in an imminent danger, that you can forego the permit, council can take an action, you can go ahead and do the work and apply for a coastal permit after the fact if one's needed. There are some cases, if it's eminently shown that it's going to fail. I know we've been talking about this since 2011 when we did the initial report that was concerned about the structural integrity of the walls. So we, our time passes and we need to get moving on it. That's correct.
So I would hope to recommend to you guys that you approach it that way because clearly, if you have ever stood there watching it while a king tide is underway, it's very clear that the, of the precarious nature is quite severe. So that's all my comment on that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments? Councilmember Pieter, do you have something else?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I do.
Dave, on the seawalls, do we have a pile of money in the tidelands capital fund ready to build these?
I don't know about piles of money. I'm the guy who spends it, but I'm going to turn it over to Dan. Maybe he can help me with that.
I mean, basically what I'm hearing is that we are not seeing the total picture of our financial status, that there's another pile of money somewhere that we don't know about.
Well, if you recall, tideland capital fund borrowed a significant sum of money to catch up on the dredging. So the tidelands capital fund owes the general fund still a significant sum. Depending on what council actions are taken with respect to moorings and other actions, there may not be a reliable source of money in the tidelands capital fund to do the project.
Okay, so the tidelands capital fund, besides the fact that we deal with the state and the lands commission and they want to know where our money's coming from and all that kind of stuff, the reality of it is there's no pot of money there to build or fix the seawall. Now, this year or next year, it's not in the, it's not in the FFP, it's not in the tidelands management or capital fund. The money doesn't exist.
Well, let me talk about that further with you. Remember, we have about eight different master plans. And if you said, I want to, is all the money for the water master plan, does that exist today to build everything in the water master plan? I'd say no. But we do have, it's a plan. It's a plan to accept revenues and make expenditures over time and accomplish all the goals within that water master plan. This is very similar to the tidelands capital plan. It is a plan to accept revenues and make expenditures over time. And the seawall project, depending on the one you select, may take five years or 10 years. And assuming the money comes in, we believe that the money will be there for the expenditures to that effect. If you decide, and I say this very respectfully, to adjust the harbor rents, we're going to have to look for another source of money for that because the tidelands capital plan at this point in time does envision setting aside the incremental increase in harbor rents and assigning those to things within the tidelands capital plan.
How many years are you assuming? Or do we have?
Or do we have the capability of replacing the walls in two years?
We couldn't do it today. Could we do it in 10 years if we saved up? It would depend on the project. If you just did the Grand Canal and fixed the west side, and Duffy's got some great ideas about how that might occur, we could probably accomplish a smaller project fairly easily over that period of time. But the bigger project, no, we don't have the money for the bigger project.
If we had to drop 10 million in two years in order to buy ourselves 20 years before we had to actually replace the walls, is that something that the Tidlands Capital Budget could, could deal with, or will the general fund and/or the FFP have to supplement that?
The general fund would have to supplement that, at that amount, especially if the harbor rents are reduced, because that was the revenue stream we were looking at for that.
Okay. Councilmember Muldoon.
Thank you. We noticed, I don't know if anyone saw, in the Newport Indy this weekend, it talked about various members of the library board, some of your attendants, concerned about the Corona Del Mar Fire Station Library moving forward right now. I think this may be a good project to halt, and the shifts, the funds may need to be shifted to the Balboa Seawall, or it's a good source that we could use. So, I think I agree with you, Mr. Pieter, on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Duffy.
Well, I got to tell you, this is my rookie season at looking at a budget like this, so please bear with me. I do have an item that, a couple of items that glare out at me. One is the Central Avenue Public Pier. And is this the idea to talk like this about these items?
Sure.
Okay. $400,000 for a dock for Dinghy's is clearly way over. It should be somewhere in the neighborhood of 50,000 to 100,000 at best. So, you might have some funds there if you want to look at that. And then the harbor piers and gangways for $800,000, I looked into that, and apparently we're going to change all, remove all the gangways and replace them with new, and replace all the piers with new. The docks, well, I've visited all 10 docks, and I videoed all 10 docks, and they are doing quite well. As a matter of fact, last year, they replaced on the piers, all the railings and the treks decking, and they look wonderful, by the way. There was one that may have been marginal, but it can clearly survive. So, if you need 800,000, it's my belief that that could be available. That's just my input on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Curry.
Well, let's be clear, that any plan to suspend activity on the Corona Del Mar Library and Fire Station is simply a plan to kill that project, because that's what will happen if the money is redirected. What's currently proposed is that we move forward with design with opportunity for public input to come back if we need to, to resolve the budget issue. I'm not convinced necessarily that there's a need for the upper room, but maybe we need. But we'll find that out as we go through the design and construction process. So, the idea that we're going to take this general fund project for the kids in Corona Del Mar, and then we're going to solve the seawall problem, what the city manager and the staff just told us is, is that we can't spend the money any faster than we're spending it if we're doing that prudently. If we're concerned about the long-term need to address seawalls, what we should do is quit slashing revenues coming into the Tidlands Fund like we've been doing, so that that is adequately funded to move forward, and not attempt to create this false choice where we pit the kids in Corona Del Mar in that library versus the idea to make some slapdash effort on the seawalls. Seawalls are something that need to be done very thoughtfully. It's a long-term investment. It requires a lot of permitting. It requires a lot of working with the neighbors. There's still signs up there, and there's not a consensus on the island about whether it should be nine feet or 10 feet. That process has all got to be worked through. We can't spend money any faster than we're doing it. We have it budgeted through the Tidlands Program to get it done. We have a prudent staff who is working appropriately to move this methodically so that it's cost-effective when we do this. And I think what we're seeing is limitations of the city council trying to design projects on their own up here at the DIAS through the budget process. So, we nearly screwed up Marina Park and its construction schedule doing that, and I hope we don't do that for the Corona Del Mar Library, and at the same time do it for the seawalls. We've needed, by the way, the fire station replacement there, when I was here in 2006, went down with Chief Riley. It needed to be replaced then. So, we need to move both of those projects along for the betterment of Corona Del Mar. And let's hear from our library board about whether or not they support this decision to suspend this project for a year, because I think when you hear from them, you'll hear that they're not in support of that.
Councilmember Muldoon.
I don't know what to say. We decide what happens in the city, not staff. And everybody knows who follows the city politics, that the harbor is being used as a scapegoat. They're backpedaling the monies, they're looking to fill in expensive projects they have in mind on the land with the fees they're charging on the harbor. So, I'm not going to buy that. I support the library at the fire station. I do think, and I ran on this, and I think it's very important, that we should be more concerned about the necessities that involve safety, welfare of the residents than we should on a project that should not be rushed. We've already been through a couple of rushed projects. In 2006, it would have been great to take care of this issue at Corona Del Mar, but instead, we have this colossal building we're sitting in right now. So, I think it's time for us to show some restraint, and for those who are elected to decide from the DIAS accordingly, as we should per the Brown Act, which projects get approved.
Councilmember Pieter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yes, I agree. I don't, it is not the intent to kill the CDM Library fire expansion. In fact, I met with the friends at the library that started up for CDM, and they are in favor of having more input and being able to potentially raise money to make it 4,000 feet instead of 2,500 feet. So, as far as the seawall goes, you know, it would be my intent to put the money in the bank, and assuming that we can put together a plan that can repair it. And one of the ideas that I had put forth to Mr. Webb several months ago was, you know, we've got a bridge rebuilding that's going to happen between the big and little island, and there's going to be a lot of disruption to the residents there. And taking the opportunity to repair the seawall in front of the Grand Canal at the same time does a couple of things. It provides us a staging area for, for construction materials, et cetera, for the bridge actually in the canal, assuming that the Coastal Commission approves our eelgrass plan, as well as allow us to disrupt that area once. And if we have a maintenance type of action instead of a replacement action, the permitting would probably allow, from a schedule standpoint. If it doesn't, then we, you know, put the money back in the library, and next year we go ahead and do something else. But like others have said, last thing I want to do is see this thing, have a, have a section of that wall collapse in a king tide and create millions of dollars worth of damage while we're sitting there thinking, "Okay, what are we going to do here?" So, this, I think this is an easy switch. I think it, it works together with the public on what they're trying to do in the library. I know the fire station may have a different position on this, but from the library's standpoint, working together and coming up with one that the community can really be invested in rather than feel like it's being shoved down their throat with something that they may not like, I think helps in the community as well. So, it is, it is thought out in that sense. I have another couple of items, if, Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow.
You have the floor.
The, a lot of things in this budget, you know, the four inches or so of material that we've gotten, the fact that I haven't seen the Tidlands Capital Budget make me very uneasy, and I will not support the budget tonight, because I don't feel that I even have an adequate handler, or that I even have all the information. I have a two-page list of things that I've asked staff to provide, which they have not. And so, I will be voting against the budget. One of the things that would change my mind on that, though, is that if I actually thought the Finance Committee had some authority to get in there and get into the line item details at that level, then I wouldn't feel like I'd have to do it at this level. And so, we're going to get to item number 16, talking about the Finance Committee, but it would be my preference that the Finance Committee go to an all-citizen panel, starting at the beginning of the next fiscal year, which would be this July 1st, and then task them with some of these ideas as far as, you know, the seawall and the, and the library switch and that kind, and those kinds of items. And that would, that would give me some faith that the items that we're looking at could actually go through the budget amendment process. You know, as it was, the Finance Committee was put together at the beginning of the year, it was put together with kind of a compromised hybrid system of some council members and some citizen members. It met once in March, then it didn't meet again until the day before we first considered our budget. They talked about it for a couple of hours and sent it on, onto us without really getting into the nitty-gritty detail. Now, we have a proposal tonight that they all meet fewer times, only as needed, rather than on a regular basis, which I think there's a lot of things in this budget that, that would deserve their scrutiny. So, I wanted to throw that on the table. And then one of the other things I'd like to see is, I still haven't seen the business license tax reduction to a business license fee addressed. You know, we have a lot of additional revenues in this year's budget, and I'm shocked, I'm sure you are too, that the spending has gone up and it matches the new income that we've got. And yes, there are priorities, but I think a tax cut is a reasonable thing to look at, and it's not included in this budget either. Another thing that I would like to see addressed is, I'll call it an efficiency study. An efficiency study would do, look at things like shared services or outsourcing opportunities or things like that, that, again, I would, I have no problem having the Finance Committee having those opportunities to go and, and look at and review, including, I would love to have, you know, Joe Nation of Stanford University come down again, like he did before, and review our pension system and our MOUs as we're going through negotiations and, and get his feedback on where we're going, which I'm actually happy with where we're going, but I'd love to get that third-party insight. I'd love to see money in the budget for that, which would be a nominal amount. We're talking 5,000 to 10,000, from what I understand. And I think there's opportunities, like Duffy pointed out in the FFP, that we can move money around. Again, I'd be happy if the Finance Committee tackled that, but short of that happening, I'd like to discuss those items as well and move that, those priorities around. That's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to make it very clear that the harbor does make money. The non-harbor-related items and the harbor-related items was given to me income and expense-wise, and it was very clear that the harbor does quite well, but when you throw in the surf beach, it loses money. So, what we're doing, just so we all are clear on this, is that we're burdening the users of the harbor to pay for things like seawalls and other items above and beyond what they need to, because the losses all come from operating the lifeguard system of boats and lifeguards and maintaining the beach as we do. So, as long as that exists, I don't think it's totally fair to burden boaters and users of the harbor, waterfront residents, as we're trying to do, because we'll never, at this rate, with a surf beach costing us so much money, make ends meet. And I think we should study very seriously at some point what we're going to do with that surf beach. I know Huntington Beach has pockets where the state runs it, and I've heard a world thing, good things about the state running a beach, and I've heard bad things, but clearly running it costs us, puts us in the negative.
Councilmember Curry.
Well, this is a good time for my new colleagues to sort of understand sort of the implications of some of the things that they're proposing. If you look at the chart that's up on the wall, you'll see we're proposing to have $171,000 surplus. Mr. Pieter's idea to go to Irvine, and everything sort of comes from Irvine there, a strategy for the business license fee would cut that budget, cut our revenues by about $3.5 million, which would put us into a deficit situation. Now, let's just follow the money as it relates to the library. There's $6 million in the library there that he wants to take out and divert to go to seawalls. Now, we've already taken $6 million of general fund money to pay for dredging. So, that's where, everybody in the city, the 82,000 people who don't own boats, paid $6 million to dredge the harbor. Now, that's an important economic asset for all of us, and so I don't have any problem at all in the fact that we did that. But taking $6 million from the Corona Del Mar Library to then punch up the seawalls, which ought to be funded through Tidlands, and by the way, the beaches are Tidlands. The beaches are part of the Tidlands the same way the harbor is. And the idea that if we go to a state beach, we don't have to pay for it is simply wrong. We'll contract and pay them to run it for us maybe, but we still have to pay to run it, or we can't fire all the lifeguards. We have 100,000 people who come to the beach every year, every day during the summer, and we pull a couple of thousand of them out of the water over the course of the weekend or a course of the month. So, we just can't do that. That math does not work. And the idea that, that the Tidlands is not being subsidized by the general fund, those are two proposals for $12 million, one we've already made and one's being proposed today, that take money from everybody else to fund for these projects. So, I, which is why it's so baffling to me that some of my colleagues continue to want to cut the Tidlands revenues, given the fact that we have these obligations relative to seawalls, relative to dredging, relative to the important investments we need to make to keep the harbor economically viable, why that doesn't make sense either. None of these ideas make economic sense.
Councilmember Pieter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dave, maybe you can tell me, or Dan, why are the seawalls considered Tidlands? Just because the State Lands Commission allows it?
There's a property line that shows exactly where the Tidlands are, and generally the seawalls are all in the Tidlands. We do have some private ones, though. There's some that are in the county, but we're talking about the, basically the Balboa Island seawalls are all Tidlands seawalls.
And see, I don't understand why, forget what's allowed to be Tidlands and what's not. You know, the boat and the harbor, they don't care if Balboa Island floods, right? It's really like a street or a storm drain. It's a public facility for the benefit of Balboa Island. Now, we as a city obviously care, but from the harbor's perspective and using that for mooring fees or dock fees to pay for that seawall around Balboa Island, to me, doesn't make sense. I know we're allowed to do it from the state's perspective, but it seems like it's a public asset like a street or a storm drain and not a harbor asset like a dock. So, that's one issue. One of the other questions I had was on Visit Newport Beach. Dan, I asked you this question earlier, and you directed me to the revenue table. Visit Newport Beach, we collect our transient occupancy tax, and we've got that shown on page one of the detailed budget book. And on line items, and you pointed that out to me, basically, we've got our TOT tax coming in on line items 4404 and 4405. And it's to the tune of, you know, 26 or 25 million dollars roughly and change. And then the part of that TOT tax goes to Visit Newport Beach, and so they get 18% of the 10% we collect on all the TOT taxes. And, but rather than showing up as an expense item later in the book, it's only showing up as a negative item on the revenue sheet, and it shows up at about $4.5 million. And as Dan, you and I talked, so correct me if I'm wrong, we had, they also get, in addition to that, they get the tourists' Business Improvement District funds, and they get 100% of those funds. And so, the numbers I think you sent me, that if you, if you were to extrapolate that out, I think you showed me the 10-month collection for this year, and the 10-month collection showed it 6.3 or 6.4. And so, if you extrapolate that out, that works out to be, and I'm sorry, I'm adding this 4.5 million of the TOT into that. You're showing me 10 months as being 3.1 million. So, if I add a couple of months onto that and then add the TOT to it, I show Visit Newport Beach getting about $8.3 million or roughly 8.3, but it really doesn't show up anywhere as an expense on our budget or line item. And I have no accountability as far as what they do with it, other than, hey, they're promoting Newport Beach, and it seems like they're doing a good job, but I don't have anything quantifiable. And that's a lot of taxpayer money that they're getting. And I, if you can explain to me, I disagree with you on this, but I don't understand why the TOT, the T-bid money, that they get 100% pass-through, why that isn't shown in our budget as part of our budget numbers, either in income, expense, or even a net number at all, because I look at the T-bid as being a 100% government-formed entity. We made it, we created it, we assigned the boards, Board of Directors for it, but for some reason, it's not even in our budget, income or expense.
So, similar to...
So similar to assessment districts where a group of private individuals agree to self-assess themselves, we, unless we're involved in the construction of the activity, the collection of the assessment and the remittance to the party, in my view, is a fiduciary role and isn't activity of the city. I'm open for other interpretations, but I think generally, we believe we act in a kind of trust and agency capacity where we're collecting that self-assessment and passing it on, and it's the tourism bid that is deciding how they expend those funds. So I don't show that as activity of the city. I only show that as a mere coming in into a trust and agency fund and going out as directed.
So it's like collecting school fees for a building permit. You collect it in trust and pass it on to the school district. But unlike that, this is an entity that they couldn't collect this from their customers if we didn't enable them to do that. And it's a governmental entity that we've created and that we assign a board of directors for. So I would like to propose that this be something that would be shown in our revenue and expenses as line items so that we can track that.
Mr. Piattar, would you add the other bids too? Or just the T-bid? Because we've got the other things that falls in that same category, I think, are the...
I think all the bids ought to be added to that. This one is a significantly larger dollar amount.
It sure does, yeah.
The other ones, we're talking in the hundreds of thousands.
If that.
We're happy to look at that further.
And could you tell us what checks and balances we have on Visit Newport Beach?
Well, there's a number of different things. Number one, I sit on the board and review their financials. As part of their contract, in addition to their financial statement audit, which gives us some assurance that their numbers are appropriately stated, we ask their auditor to take one step further and perform an AUP audit or agreed-upon procedures where they do some compliance test work on the activity for the year, and they report back to us in the form of that AUP letter stating that we've done certain procedures, certain test work, and would report any compliance findings. We also have the ability to, the right to audit, so if we feel for any reason we'd like to go on there ourselves, certainly, I don't think Visit Newport Beach would have a problem if I came in with my staff to do a due diligence review. And the, you know, another action we could take is to hire an outside auditor to review their work as well, but that agreed-upon procedures was intended to be, give us some additional assurance each year as the primary step, but we do have some additional levers we could pull if necessary.
So their audit basically does some sort of checking to make sure that they spent the money on what they said they spent the money on. And then the procedures aspect of it that you're referring to, reviews their, maybe their procedures, to make sure that there are procedures in place that keep people from running away with the money?
The procedures are procedures that we lay out with the auditors to, it's not a full-scope audit, it's a mutually agreed-upon set of procedures or test work where they would go in, and they're usually compliance-type, test every fifth transaction, test, you know, 100 transactions, and tell us whether it conforms to our contract with them. And then they report back to us their findings of applying those test work procedures, those compliance procedures.
So are they checked every year as far as their procedures, their accounting procedures, whatever, you know, two signatures on a check to make sure that there's nobody necessarily running, I'm not alleging that this is happening, I'm just, what safeguards are there to make sure that they're not running away with taxpayer money when they shouldn't be?
Well, as part of their financial statement audit, the auditors have an obligation to obtain an understanding of their internal control structure and report out to their board whether there were instances that would be considered material deviations from compliance or reportable conditions. And they also report out to us in the form of items that are of lesser significance in the form of a management letter comment. And in the years I've been reviewing those two, they haven't received any reportable conditions from their auditors, and the management letter comments have been relatively inconsequential.
And when that happens, you bring those back to us and do an annual report, or is it just stop at you and the rest of the board, obviously?
Up until now, it stops with me, but if you'd like, I can, I'm happy to report out to you at any interval.
And none of these audit procedures actually evaluate whether or not they're putting more, as people refer to it, beds, or heads in the beds, right? There's no part of this audit that says, hey, our $8.3 million is actually doing some good, and we're getting more people to come and come to Newport Beach worth that $8.3 million and more?
That's always a difficult, difficult to answer, to say, this dollar in produced so much out. They have heard that concern, and they have applied a number of statistics that they control, that they produce, so they do have certain performance measures when they build their budget and can help quantify that, but marketing is inherently difficult to say, for each dollar out, this is what I get in return.
Especially for a bean counter, that's a really hard thing to grasp, huh?
Yes, it is.
So, but do they make those kinds of presentations to the board?
They do.
They make a presentation to you folks, too. It usually happens in July, where they'll, they show you their annual budget and their marketing plan, and then it's also a report back on the previous year's plan.
And I see tonight we're approving the board members, reappointing them for our restaurant bid and our CDM bid. When does the T-bid come back to us for the board members?
The T-bid is on a longer cycle. It's founded by a different act, the 1994 Act for T-bids, and I think it's every five years, if, Aaron might have to help me out there.
You need a microphone.
The city does have one representative on that board, but I think it's a...
You mean besides Dan?
Oh, sorry, there's two boards we're talking about. Dan, it serves on the Visit Newport Beach Board, and I think there are 22 members. There's a lot.
A lot of GMs.
Yeah. Then the T-bid has a, T-bid has a separate board of about, the T-bid members, each one is a member of the board, and then...
So the Newport Beaching Company, Visit Newport Beach Board, we have no control over. It's only the T-bid that we have control over the board?
Correct, that's my understanding, but I think it's not a regular renewal like the 1989 Act bids that you're seeing tonight. It's an every-five-year renewal with the 1994 Act.
And the Newport Beaching Company also has a 501(c)(3), which has a different board. Do we know how much taxpayer dollars go into their 501(c)(3)?
We're getting above, past our skis on this, unless you know, Dan. This would be probably a good thing to have Mr. Sherwin come up and discuss. Or we can give you a report on it, too.
They're very happy to come back to a study session and report in great depth on their structure and their organization. It's just whether or not you want that. I think if you ask, they would happily come.
Or the Finance Committee can review it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Curry.
Well, just to clarify some of the stuff that was just talked about, the T-bid was a voluntary effort by some, but not all of the hotels to gather together, self-assess themselves. We facilitated that through the T-bid so they could promote the city. Now, the metric of effectiveness that I like to use is what does that translate to in terms of the city's share of the TOT tax? When I got on the City Council, it was about $13 million a year that we brought in that subsidized, revenues from visitors that subsidized other people, and now it's close to $21 million. So that growth, to me, is a measure of the effectiveness of how well they're spending the T-bid money and other money to promote the city, to increase room revenues and visitors to our community and the revenues that they generate. And I would just note, to put that number in perspective, that the incremental growth in that revenue brought about by the work of Visit Newport is enough to build the Corona del Mar Library. And the following year, it's enough to build the seawall improvements that people are talking about here, as long as we don't get involved and screw it up by putting additional government burdens on what they're trying to do there to promote our city. So I'm very pleased about the fact that what our top three, the third highest revenue generator in the city, bringing in more than $20 million, enough to fund these important capital improvements, comes through visitors, not taxpayers of our community, because of the good work that Visit Newport Beach does.
Councilmember Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify something that Councilman Curry mentioned, that I said that I didn't, I want to have lifeguards on the surf beach. Quite the contrary. The state provides lifeguards, and I've heard that their standards for qualifying to be a lifeguard are even higher than the ones that we have. So I didn't want to make that clear. And then I had a question for Dan about the vessel property tax. So the vessel property tax, we do, that goes to the county, we get, do we get a percentage of that?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Does it go, it doesn't, I'm just asking, but I assume, I haven't seen of it, it doesn't go into the tidelands fund, right?
No, we're the taxing authority. I think the tidelands fund is intended on rents derived from the tidelands property.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought. So once it goes into the general fund, would it not be satisfactory to use all those funds to provide capital improvements to the harbor?
That is certainly council prerogative to use any unrestricted general fund monies for those purposes.
Well, by the same token, Dan, can we use the property tax generated in my neighborhood just for investments in my neighborhood?
Yes.
Councilmember Piattar.
And just clarification, Mr. Curry's right. Visit Newport Beach has done, from what I can tell, a stellar job. I'm more concerned about just the reporting and accountability side, and one of the things that does give me confidence that they're doing a good job is that the hotel guys that are actually voluntarily taxing their customers to help support it are on their board, and they're going to know better than I or other staff people on whether or not they're doing a good job. So my concern here is not that they're not doing a good job, but just are we doing our job and holding them accountable and reporting adequately to the taxpayer? But thanks.
Councilmember Petros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I've been sitting here listening to this ad nauseam. First, I want to make it real clear that when I decide to open this mic and speak, it's not to take the time to teach myself at my colleagues' expense. It's generally, I have a line of question that leads to my point, and I would hope that in the future, my colleagues will also not waste my time as they spend it learning about things that they could do on their own. Secondly, I heard Mr. Councilmember Muldoon give a very impassioned speech about it's the council's obligation to determine what, how this budget is spent and the projects that we want to fund. It's our responsibility. It's certainly not staff's, in Councilmember Muldoon's opinion. And I would say that that opinion also extends to things like the community purse, and I am not prepared to relinquish my responsibility over the community purse to a citizens committee that is abstracted from that. That is precisely this council's responsibility, and I think that the council needs to be and continue to be part of the Finance Commission or committee, especially when you're talking about going to the level of detail that you are with relinquishing your authority about the very specific line items that you're suggesting. So that, I think, is very imprudent. Finally, phew, getting worked up, slow down. Councilmember Duffield, if you might remember, we attempted at one point to give Big Corona back to the state, allow them to run their beach. We talked about state lifeguards. I hope to never engage in that conversation again. If you would like to champion state lifeguards on city beaches, I will be 100% behind you about 50 yards back. The people of Newport Beach appreciate their lifeguards, and I think that the level of quality and service speaks to that. I will, I'll watch that one unfold.
Well, just, may I get in line? Mayor Protem Dixon.
I'll call on you next.
Well, if you want to, I'll see to, if you want to respond, Councilman Duffy, on that point, because I'm going to make another point on another...
So my point is, Councilman Petros, that we should all be aware that the general fund needs to pay for things in the harbor, because the tidelands will never be able to do it, ever, as long as you have a surf beach that costs tons and tons of money, more than we can make with the tidelands. So when you burden the users of the harbor to offset the surf beach, it's not fair, it's my opinion. And I'm sorry I asked questions, I thought this was an informal study session.
Mayor Protem Dixon.
Okay, I just want to shift gears back to the budget discussion. First of all, thank you, staff and Dan and staff, for going into this additional level of detail today, particularly on the maintenance and operations and the programming, and I appreciate that, because I did ask many of those questions. I, along with Councilman Piattar, have sat down with the department heads and have gone through some specific detail, and I appreciate that as well. That's been a number of hours of special meetings, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Two points from those meetings, I've come away with a better understanding of how well the city is doing in contracting out and outsourcing many of our services. This has been going on for a number of years. It's good management, it's economy, it's efficiency, and I get a sense through meeting with all the department heads that each department head, as they put together his or her budget, they are looking to where they can outsource and continue to do that. In that spirit of that same conversation, Dave, I'd like to ask you where you see we can still accomplish more, right? Perhaps there are some functions in municipal operations, maybe wastewater, we talked a little bit about that earlier today in our budget meeting, so I don't know if there's some there, there. Some fire prevention activity and EMS administration, those are just off the top of my head on my list. If you want to comment on that, Dave, but also on the broader subject of continuing to look for ways we can outsource services, backend-type functions that do not, they're not front-end where they are confronting citizens and residents on a daily basis, but more backend-type functions. Could you comment on that, please? Thank you.
Sure, Mayor Protem Dixon, and thank you for that question. I don't think we're doing our job as a staff unless we look at different ways to do things, including our own jobs. And I do try to instill that spirit in the department heads, knowing that there are challenges there and looking at a whole division of your coworkers and knowing that they're, they'll be tested on their efficiency in that kind of review. And you've identified a number of areas that I think we should at least look at, and as I say them, there are one similar to what you said, I think it's honest to look at it. It's appropriate to look at it. It doesn't mean necessarily that folks would lose their jobs, but we're in a different time. We've been in a different time since 2009 where we want to look at these things. So wastewater is one. The way we administer our EMS program, I'm not talking about the program itself, but the way we administer it, the way we ensure that we have quality, control, and compliance. And I think I've let you know that we're, I'm interested in seeing if we could share that with another city. that with another city. There's an aspect of municipal operations where we do asphalt and concrete patching. We should probably look at whether or not we should still do that. Maybe we'll conclude that we should, but fire prevention is another area, whether that could be done a little bit more efficiently, I don't know. Fleet maintenance is an interesting area where there might be an opportunity, not to stop doing it, we know we need to maintain our fleet, but to potentially invite other cities to use our own, or a contractor, but other cities to use our own fleet crew to maintain their vehicles. So I think it looks at outsource as well as in-source, and those are the five that come to mind. I want to get back to something Mr. Pieter said. Do we have money in the budget for studies like this? We actually do. We don't call it out, but the council has a line item every year. It's called 80-80, and that, these are for studies precisely like this, or that Joe Nation might do. So please, if the council wishes that these be done, that's the source of money for them. If we don't use the money, it goes back into fund balance. So those five are probably what I would look at first, unless there are any concerns about those five, or additions or subtractions.
Councilmember Pieter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. One is, I appreciate Mr. Petros, and sorry for my dumb questions. But yes, the citizens committee, we would obviously not be relinquishing any of our authority, they would only be a recommending body to us. Dave, you, on Marina Park, you talk about only adding four positions. I'm looking on page 189 of the detailed report, and it shows seven and a half positions, which is why I think the eight came up. Am I not reading this right, or are you moving people from different places so that we're not net adding personnel?
Well, if you look at the, I count the full-time positions, and I'm sorry, I guess if, when I, when I look at my number count of 729 or 733, I'm always counting the full-time, because those others are just hours. There are someone's hours that may work maybe 10 hours a week. They're equivalent to a full-time position, but the net is, these are part-time people that might be, say, helping set up and take down a classroom or something like that. So I would respect where you're coming from in terms of the eight, but it's really four full-time, and the rest are, could be 20 people filling those part-time hours.
Well, if we wanted to take your numbers and make it look really good, we could change full-time positions into part-time positions, actually put in more hours in FTEs, but your chart would show that we weren't adding any personnel. So I don't know that that's what you did, but...
No, that's never what my intent, the full, the part-time positions come with a whole different benefit load, it's much less, which is why I don't count them the same as a full-time position. Someone that's in PERS, that gets all the health benefits, et cetera.
Do you have similar numbers, then, that show full FTEs, even though there might be, part of those be asterisked as less benefits?
Yeah, they're in the back of the performance plan in 184. It's that we do, we do a comparison of FTs and FTEs. And assuming the part-time position is not a PERS employee, the load on that, that employee is significantly less, we're talking about, about 5.2% of total salaries for a standard part-time employee.
Versus a full-time?
Correct.
And the part-time are anything less than 40, or anything less than 32, when full-time benefits have to kick in? How does that work?
I think they try to keep the part-time at 38 hours or less.
38 or less? But I thought we had to provide full-time benefits at 32, or some number like that?
PERS, you become eligible for PERS enrollment once you work 1,000 hours in a fiscal year.
So at 38 hours a week, that would mean in
You could, if you
Six and a half months, you'd have it.
A lot of theirs are seasonal, where they don't work the whole year.
And a lot of our departments will manage those, knowing that that's a, that's a cost concern, so the person will not exceed those hourly thresholds.
Can you show me on this chart, then, where your 730 number comes from?
So Dan has the chart up there on the screen, should be on your screen, too. So there's an FT number, and that's the full-time positions, 736 to 728 to 732, although this is amended by the checklist still. This is the proposed budget. And then the, about 130 full-time equivalent positions, so those could be, those could be 400 part-timers, or 500 part-timers. Those are the seasonal lifeguards, for instance, library pages.
So you're showing in the total number, the full-time, in this chart goes 728 to 732, and you've checklist adjusted it a little bit?
I think we checklist adjusted it to 730, is that right?
And you're showing the full-time equivalent going from 124.6 to 129.3, so you're only adding five FTEs this year. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Longer than we thought. Open for public comment on the budget part two. Please come forward if you'd like to address the council.
Hello, I'm Joy Brenner, and I'd like to thank Mayor Selich and the council for entertaining public comments on this budget. I am with a group called Friends of the CDM Library. We formed only two weeks ago, when we realized that there had not been, well, hardly any public input into what our library was going to be. We've had a tremendous outpouring of people that have joined our group and have expressed opinions, we've had meetings, we've gotten a lot of public input already, and are moving forward in that regard to make sure that our library is really what we want it to be and reflects our community. We know the fire department has been very proactive, and we appreciate that. We wish we had been very proactive from the beginning about getting everything planned out, but it's not planned, and it does need to be worked on. Now, we, in the effort to work with everyone, we have invited Scott Pieter to come to our meeting. He had some interesting input, and we, we don't want to be divisive, we don't want to be polarizing. We want to work with, and we'll consider anyone's ideas. So when Scott proposed that perhaps this could be delayed for a year, we were willing to look at it. During the day today, I have talked to so many people, so many organizations, and the mass input is that we do not want to see this program delayed. The consensus is, yes, we need a great deal more public input, and we will work morning, noon, and night to make sure that happens, but we don't feel comfortable pulling this from the budget at this time. And Scott, I have to tell you, when you said pull it and use the money for seawalls, I felt my blood pressure rise, because it's not a matter of seawalls versus the library. The library needs to be funded, and the fire department, and the seawalls need to be funded, but don't fund one at the other's expense, it's not fair. And we have several members of our library community, friends, community here, that would also like to speak about it. But I just have to say one thing that, that really bothered me about that, is I look at everything in terms of what message are we sending? And the message that we're sending to not only our own citizens, but also the outside community, is it who we are as a community? Are we a materialistic community that only cares about our boats and our big houses and our shopping and that sort of thing, or, and our big civic center and our art? And is that what we are? Who are we as a community? Or are we a community that's proud of our library system, that loves our, our community satellite branches, that utilizes them? In fact, I sent a picture to your mass email today, of a picture of the strollers practically blocking the entrance at the Corona del Mar Library today. So we have a lot of work to do, but we really want this program to be funded and move forward with it as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name's Josh Yocum, and I'd like to ask staff, can you pull up the budget checklist? Want to comment on one of the items there? Back, back, keep going. Look, there it is, forward one. Okay. I'd like to speak to the personnel changes, and I'll just, I'll read it as such, you know, the lifeguard restructuring, eliminate one vacant full-time lifeguard officer position, and upgrade three full-time lifeguard officer positions to three full-time lifeguard captain positions, and add three, you know, .72 full-time equivalent, equivalent lifeguard officers. What I'd like to cite is this, it doesn't fairly depict the budget actual changes, the net impact to budget actuals. You know, again, let's, let's go back to that key word there, a vacant position. Essentially, the current state of the city and the lifeguard department is to fill based on attrition needs. So when there's a vacancy that needs to be filled, the city puts out a test, and individuals are promoted. For example, just last month, a lifeguard captain position was filled by a promoted lifeguard officer who took a test and won through the testing procedure the right to be promoted. So as we currently sit, there is a process to fill open positions, vacant positions, based on needs. What I'd also like to cite, in the city's moves to make negotiations more transparent, the tentatively agreed upon contract between the city and the Lifeguard Management Association is going to be discussed this evening in item number 13 on the consent calendar, but this item in the tentative agreement does not discuss these changes here, okay? So these, essentially, three individuals who are going to be receiving a promotion are not discussed in this tentatively agreed to contract. What's the difference? What's the point? A top step lifeguard officer currently is paid $69,909. A top step lifeguard captain makes $91,520. That's a difference of just over $21,000. And, and I just want to make sure the city is appropriately spending money where we need to. And in my opinion, not necessarily on increased pension contributions to employees, but let's say, putting more eyes on the water, more seasonal part-time lifeguards, make it a safer beach for not only visitors and local residents, but also the individuals tasked with watching the water, the tower lifeguards, the individuals in the trucks and on the boats. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Selich and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I agree with Councilman Pieter, this is a great deal to try to digest, all the slides we've seen today and all the budget documents, especially considering that you're going to be asked in a few hours from now to approve the entire thing, like we all understand it, which I don't think most of us do. And I personally want to say, I think it's good for the city council members, especially the new ones, to be educating themselves in public, because that is one of the few opportunities that public has, in a painless way, to ourselves, become educated about the budget. Regarding the things you heard about today, the FFP is Facilities Finance Plan, confusing to me, because up until this year, I had thought that this was just kind of a hypothetical demonstration of how a particular wish list of items could be funded if that wish list was the one that we chose, but not necessarily the particular wish list we are approving or wanting, or will be using in the future. But it seems to be becoming more and more of an official document, and I understand tonight, in some sense, you're going to be asked to approve the project's scope and timing of this. And then, then when I hear about libraries, and then I hear about seawalls, and I hear about gangways, I don't know if this is going to be revised by tonight, and you're actually approving something with new dates, projects and scope in it, or exactly what is happening. But I did see on the first page, we hear a lot about the Corona del Mar Library, I also see on the first page, the Fire Station One Peninsula Balboa Library here, with the same budget and a more severe downsizing actually being proposed. It's currently a larger and older library, most of it, that was expanded, not in 1962, as it says here, but actually in 1961. And the same budget is being arbitrarily assigned to it, and it's being downsized to the same 2,500, which is less than half the size that it currently is. So the public might be aware, if you are committing to that, to know and be able to comment, but in a couple hours, I don't know how they're going to be able to do that. Second, regarding all these pie charts we saw, I have kind of a comment about that. We saw one here about the salaries and benefits of the official city employees, on whom we're paying, spending $125 million, according to one of the pie charts we saw. I believe, if I understand, that that pays for about 860 employees equivalent total. And then we saw on another pie chart or two, a little confusing to me, but I add these two together, through contracts for various kinds of services, we're, we're paying another $30 million. But I would wonder if anybody has a concept of how big that shadow government, how many employees are we getting for the $30 million or equivalent? I have not heard that number, or even know if we know what that number is. And then finally, there was a slide up here for a long time, showing the predicted general fund, or projected general fund budget surplus at the end of the year. It was saying 171, but the staff report for tonight says 38, and I'm wondering how 171 can be the number, and then 38? They both said after the checklist, if you did everything, maybe it's a different checklist than the one that the public sees in the lobby? And then finally, if I can run over just a second, there, the report for tonight mentions that there is a $2 million surplus from last year, and projected surplus this year will be only the 171 or 38. I am wondering if the surplus from last year is regarded as revenue into the current budget. So if our surplus goes down from year to year, it means that we're losing ground on our operating expenses being bigger than our revenue, or through the accounting, it does not mean that. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Elizabeth Starr, and I'm here to say that Newport Beach should be terribly proud of its library. We've talked about boats tonight, but Blueport has boats and books. Our library is used by all the schoolchildren, all the college children who live in our neighboring communities, who have county libraries, not a city library. We are bringing people into Newport Beach to shop in Fashion Island, to use our restaurants, who are coming to use our library because of its quality, and we need to maintain that quality in Corona del Mar. We have the four branches of our libraries because of our geographic location and the traffic that we have, so we don't have to have people driving great distances. And the Corona del Mar branch is very vital to that area of our city for all ages, and it needs to be rebuilt and be large enough to adequately handle our people. Newport Beach should be proud of its education system. We send our young people off to fabulous schools every single year, and part of the reason of that is that we have an outstanding library system to serve all of the schoolchildren in Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Lynn Doe, I live in CDM. I'm here to support the CDM Library. I want to let you know that our children really depend on this library. It has great programming, she loves it. And I spoke with some nannies today, and also some moms, and they didn't even know that it's being torn down, and they wanted to know, what is the interim program? It's such an amazing library, the feel of it, the smallness, you know, the quaintness of it. It fits into CDM, the staff are amazing, and we really want to make sure that we preserve it and that we keep that spirit in our community. And we bought our home here, and one of the reasons was to have a family here, and to raise our children and have them be able to walk to the library, and that's very important. You know, the avocado library is awesome, but it's quite far for young families to walk to, and for the nannies, and they support the families there in CDM as well. Also, there's been a huge boom in young children in our neighborhoods, so I think that should be taken into consideration. The importance of story time for the kids before they start kindergarten and for their development is so crucial, and the people there today really were, you know, somewhat distressed, asking what's, what are we going to do, including Flo, who's been a nanny for three families in CDM over eight years. She really wants to know, what are we going to do? And how can she help to contribute? And how can she help to contribute to this effort to save the library for the kids? It's very well attended. Recently, we had 69 people. Today, there were around 40 people attending, in this very small space. I think some people, my neighbor, who'd never gone before with her toddler, was really astounded how tight the small room was for the library, for the storytime, when she came, when it was 69 people. And I just want to make sure that we keep this library intact, and in the size that we would like it to be for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Karen Carlson, and I'm also here to speak about the Corona Del Mar Library. A long, long time member, and I would say at least three to four days a week user of the library. Not only the children, the toddlers, but also, I would say, I speak for almost every walker in the Corona Del Mar area. It's a very used community. We walk a lot. One of the things, it's the best thing about the community, is so many, are so many things are within a very small area. And we can walk to the Corona Del Mar Library, and we can't walk to the big one. It's a wonderful resource for our senior citizens, and it's a community home for a lot of them. And I think, as she was mentioning before, so many of us didn't, were not aware of the library plans, the immediacy of it, and the lack of community input. And so I really support you passing the budget for the library, and we will work very hard with the architects, and for community input. And it's, it's a wonderful resource to keep the center of our very loving and vibrant Corona Del Mar community. And thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to council. Any closing comments from council members? Mr. Kiff, did you have any closing comments before we leave this item?
Just that a number of you did have, I think, some concerns about items in the budget, so make sure that if you continue to feel strongly about those, that you bring those up tonight. Those could be some of the ones that Mr. Duffy, Councilmember Duffy mentioned, and you would want that as an amendment on the checklist. So I don't want you to think that we're ignoring what you said. You can vote on that, you can add something and subtract something from the checklist. So you could say, I want $50,000 spent on these docs versus 400. That's a perfectly appropriate thing to say, and we'll follow that. That's our job.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're continuing study session item number three, the wastewater rate study, to the next meeting, since we obviously ran way over on our budget discussion. And so we'll move on to public comments. Madam Clerk?
Public comments. Oh, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Okay, does anyone make a public comment on non-agenda or closed-session items? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll now adjourn to closed session. Mr. Harp, do you have any announcements you want to make on the closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Selich. The City Council will adjourn to closed session to discuss item 4A, conference with labor negotiators, with the agency designated representatives, Dave Kiff, City Manager, and Terry Cassidy, Deputy City Manager, with all represented employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.